Everybody's cameras on?
Yes, I see all of the commissioners. There we are. And for those that are just joining, it is 11:01. We'll give folks another two minutes to get on. Make sure you're settled and ready to launch this. Christina, do you want to just let folks know that we're just waiting? Maybe now's a good time to do the first announcement for the Spanish channel?
Buenos dias, mas estamos esperando mientras que gente está agregando estas citas en su Zoom. Pero bienvenido y gracias por acompañarnos hoy. La traducción al español está disponible para aquellos que desean participar en español. Para acceder al canal en español, va a la sección inferior derecha de su pantalla y haga clic en el icono de globo mundial. Luego, selección español. Si desea hacer un comentario, puede hacerlo en español y su comentario será traducido al inglés. También puedo utilizar el cuadro de chat para hacer preguntas y gracias.
Okay, well, we are at 11:03. So Chuck, if you don't mind, I'm going to have you move ahead one slide. Great, thank you. So my name's Elizabeth Mazara Myers. I'm chief of staff to Chair Harrington. I want to welcome everybody that's here today. You're going to hear from me just for a minute before I turn it over to the chair for the rest of the program. We just want to remind folks of the rules for the participation today. We want you to participate with intention, want to appreciate the diversity of perspectives that everyone brings. We ask that we all maintain a respectful space, create opportunity for everybody to engage. If you are watching via Zoom, you can still submit a question. I'll ask that you email it to me. My email address is Elizabeth underscore Mazara hyphen Myers at code at washington.org.us. I will be checking my email throughout and during the Q and A section, I will be able to raise those up. For those that are joining us via Zoom, there is the chat function and the raise hands function. So again, when we get to the Q and A section, we'll repeat these instructions for you. But we do have folks monitoring that. With that, I am now going to turn this over to Chair Harrington to welcome the public and to remind Christina to again provide the Spanish instructions. Welcome, everyone.
Good morning, everyone. This is Catherine Harrington, your elected chair of the Washington County Board of Commissioners. I'm thrilled that you're joining us this morning. I am joined by your full complement of commissioners here in Washington County. For District One, there's Commissioner Nafisa Fai. For District Two, there's Commissioner Pam Trees. For District Three, there's Commissioner Roy Rogers. And for District Four, Commissioner Jerry Willey. Thank you again for joining us on this pretty nice Saturday in March, weather-wise. It's a nice spring day. We really appreciate your coming to engage with us. We'd like to share with you the priorities that we have chosen to move forward in our service to you. And then you'll each have the opportunity to hear from every one of the members of your board of commission. So I'll pause right now for another announcement.
Gracias, Presidenta Harrington. Bienvenidos, gracias por acompañarnos hoy. La traducción al español está disponible para aquellos que desean participar en español. Para acceder al canal en español, va a la sección inferior derecha de su pantalla y haga clic en el icono del mundo, del globo español. Si desea hacer una, un comentario, puede hacerlo en español cruzando, arse la mano y su comentario será traducido al inglés. También puedo utilizar el cuadro de chat para hacer preguntas. Gracias.
Thank you. So now I'm going to give you a summary of the priorities, the key priorities for addressing policies and program investments on your behalf in service to you. As you know, Washington County has a quite a variety of responsibilities, as all 36 counties in Oregon do. We also have some unique responsibilities. But here we are in 2021 and we have met as your commission, including input that we have received from you and are really going to be focusing on making additional progress and spending time on the following six key areas. First, equity, diversity, and inclusion. So as you know, this board has totally embraced the concept that we need to make investments particularly for those historically underserved members of our community. And we need to make sure that we are enabling equitable outcomes throughout our region. Towards that end, in this year, we have kicked off an Equity Advisory Council of employees within the organization so that we harness their energy and ensure that we have an equitable workplace for them. We're going to be launching an Advisory Committee on Racial Equity with members of our community to help advise us in our work as we continue to be equitable. We know that areas of our country that focus on advancing racial equity do better over the short term and the long term, hence our focus on this area. It also includes making sure that we are leveraging your taxpayer dollars in an equitable fashion. So all of our procurement, whether it's for a small item or for the multimillion-dollar capital investments we are responsible for on your behalf. We want to make sure that we are putting equity into practice for the benefit of you in our community, for employing more people in great career opportunities and so forth. So 2020 was a census year. Unfortunately, with the global pandemic, the federal government won't have the opportunity to deliver that information to us any sooner than the end of September. What redistricting is all about is, as you know, counting everyone in our country. And in our democracy, we make sure that we have equal representation. So we take the entire population of Washington County and we divide it up into the four districts so that each district commissioner has the opportunity to represent approximately the same number of people. That work is mandated work that we need to do. We hope to get it done by the end of this year, but we rely on that data. So we'll move forward from there. The Affordable Housing Bond, you as voters approved that. We've done the tremendous work based on the level of community engagement, what we've heard from you and also from our subject matter experts and staff. Last year, we approved a whole slate of new projects. So we have approved nine different projects. We have over 700 homes under, that have been approved and under construction. Our first annual report was published in December of last year, just a few short months ago. And moving forward, we're going to continue to be watching that program, approving additional projects so that we deliver on the promise made to you to increase the number of affordable housing, publicly regulated homes to the tune of over 1,300 new homes. Supportive Housing Services, this is another voter-approved program. Thank you very much, voters, to ensure that we take efforts to address the chronic homeless population here in Washington County and those at risk of becoming homeless. This is a regional program. It's the first of its kind in the nation. We are working with our partners here in Washington County and across the three counties in our metro area to address the supportive housing services need. We have a local implementation plan that we've been working on with our staff and community partners. It will be out for public review next week. We hope you'll take a look. And we have helped support the expansion of staff to get to that program. Next, transportation. You voters approved a major streets transportation investment program over 25 years ago. We go through a process to look at new policies and new program investments. So the last time this was looked at was in 2016. We now have a, the need to define a new slate of projects and program investments here in our community. So that will be coming up in the second half of the year. Lastly, COVID response and economic recovery. We have spent a tremendous amount of time over this last year to ensure that we support you in the COVID spread situation. Luckily, we now have vaccinations that are being deployed and we have a lot more work to do to ensure that we can help our businesses and our residents recover from the terrible economic impact of this global pandemic. We worked a lot last year to distribute dollars available through the federal government through the CARES Act and the Coronavirus Relief Fund. Congress is working on the American Recovery Plan and we hope that the president will sign on to that to provide some additional dollars so that we in county government and public health can continue to support the recovery from this pandemic. So that's it at a high level. We're next going to transition to each of our county commissioners so that they have about five minutes each to tell you more about the work that they're doing, their priorities for this year in service to you. So first up, we have Commissioner Nafisa Fai from District One.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone, and hello. My name is Nafisa Fai. I'm Commissioner for District One. The newest member of the Washington County Board of Commissioners. I was elected in November to represent for District One and I'm so honored to be here and thank you so much for everyone in our district and throughout Washington County who supported me and make sure that I get elected and honestly change the trajectory of Washington County. As your commissioner, I'm committed, you know, what I said on the campaign trails and the issues that are so relevant in not only District One, but honestly, you know, that's a problem that throughout the state. One of the issues that are, you know, that I campaigned on as a priority number one was affordable housing and addressing the crisis of affordable housing and making sure, you know, we address the root cause of poverty and level the playing field for everyone. I lived in low-income housing and I am a homeowner now. I really want to make sure that we implement equity lens into how we address affordable housing and housing affordability. And we facilitate robust pathways to homeownership so that we can uplift people out of poverty and help people build generational wealth. The other issue and priority number two that I've heard from people in our district, when I was door knocking before the pandemic in 2019, was, you know, meaningfully alleviating traffic congestion and really figuring out way to detox our county from this traffic congestion. And I'm committed to that. And the last two months that I've been on the board, I've been really focusing on understanding what Washington County does as a county for our community and for our region and really for our state and figuring out, you know, what are some of the most complaints of safety issues in my district? And also understand the congestion hotspots in District One. And lastly, and I really want to make sure Washington County is safe and prosperous and inclusive place for everyone and been understanding where can we facilitate those priorities? And really understanding where I can be the most impact and have the most impact for our district and for Washington County. And as a professional in public health, most of my careers have been in public health and deeply committed to meaningful ways of addressing the COVID and really centering folks that are impacted, the pandemic and communities who have been disproportionately hurt by this community, both economically and for both the social determinants of health. And lastly, you know, as a business owner, really figuring out where, how we can empower people to create businesses in Washington County, people like myself, and to really create a movement of folks who are empowered and galvanized to create businesses in Washington County. Thank you, and I'm honored. Please reach out. And above all, as I said on the campaign trails, I'm more than committed to being a transparent and accessible commissioner. Reach out to me. I want to make sure I meaningfully facilitate ways to address the concerns that you're experiencing as a resident. And please continue to come to me of any of the complaints that's happening. And I will make sure that I get you connected to the right staff and we address your concerns. Thank you. And now I turn it to our chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Fai. Next, we'll hear from Commissioner Pam Trees from District Two.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. And a special welcome to Commissioner Fai, to the commission. I'm looking forward to working with you. And congratulations on your first town hall here. So good morning to everyone and thank you for taking the time to be with us this morning. I'm proud of the board's work last year to advance racial equity, working with community stakeholders along with subject matter experts to come up with a county's first diversity, equity, and inclusion resolution. This is recognition that our county is one of the most racially and ethnically diverse in the state of Oregon and that this rich cultural diversity drives many positives, including innovation, and it creates stronger economies and better social and health outcomes. However, our board's adoption of an equity resolution doesn't mean the work is over or that we won't be held accountable for upholding those values that have been outlined. With this recognition of our evolving county, we've also launched an Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Initiative that entails a two- to five-year process with goals for equitable outcomes throughout our county's programs, our budgets, the decision-making process, and our service delivery. One of the key actions from the initiative was another first in the county with the hiring of our Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer, Latricia Tillman. My focus in the coming year will be to continue to support her work to build out our new Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement to support our DEI initiative across all aspects of our public service mission. With the devastating impacts of the COVID pandemic this last year, we saw how disproportionately it impacted our BIPOC communities. In the business realm, as the county stepped up to help struggling enterprises, I was really proud of our work to put BIPOC communities front and center. We worked with MISO, the Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon, and Craft3 to make the county and federal government funding available and made supporting those communities a priority with really solid results. This focus will continue as we learn more about the Coronavirus Relief Plan that was just passed by the Senate a few hours ago. As we prepare to receive those federal dollars to support the recovery from the pandemic, my focus will be on the continuation of a targeted approach to support the traditionally disadvantaged communities and to ensure equitable outcomes for everybody. Lastly, I want to touch on my work to support child focus needs in our county. As you know, there is a need out there to provide support to our children that cannot be met just by the hours that they have traditionally, not currently, spent in school. Our county does great work with programs like WIC, our libraries, and our summer programs, just to name a few. But it's time we take a hard look at child development and family needs and make smart and informed investments to target where we are seeing the data show intervention makes the most impact. Data has shown a huge impact can be made if we reach children five and under. If we enhance our current resources for children struggling at that age, it can have a ripple effect down the road, helping them succeed in all aspects of life. Investments on an ongoing basis for our school-aged children is also important in supporting their development as healthy and productive adults and to provide resources for the families in Washington County. We know that the pandemic has had a huge, and that's probably an understatement, a huge impact on working mothers with extraordinary numbers of women leaving the workplace to meet the educational and daycare needs of their children. My work and priority will be to understand where our dollars can make the most impact and how to use those dollars strategically to support our children and their families at their most vulnerable. This is not an easy answer and there are many approaches. I'm continuing to have conversations with other elected leaders and community stakeholders to work on an approach that best benefits our children and families. I remain committed to making Washington County a place where our children can grow and can thrive. I'm looking forward to your questions today and the conversation, but I also want to let you know that my door is always open and I appreciate the information that I get from my constituents in District Two as well as constituents from throughout Washington County. So thank you for your time today and back to Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Trees. Next, we're going to hear from Commissioner Roy Rogers, the Commissioner for District Three.
Thank you. For those of you who do not know where District Three is, it's in the southeast quadrant of the county. It's a unique district and then about 80% of the folks in that particular area are inside cities. And you see the four items that I would like to address very briefly since we have limited time. I would tell you, the overarching issue is that the future is here today. The future is here today. We're seeing with the COVID pandemic that what we saw in textbooks and colleges many years ago has been accelerated and that people no longer are working in traditional workplaces. We're seeing work from home. We're seeing advances in technology. We're seeing artificial intelligence, which for those of you who aren't aware of what that is, it's machines doing human work. And we're seeing massive changes that are affecting this county. First of all, we need to get the county moving again. We've shut it down for reasons that we had to with that pandemic, but we need to safely open it again. It's got to be our number one priority. Secondly, we need to understand that 40 to 50% by most experts' estimates of the jobs that you see today, 40 to 50% won't be here anywhere from 10 to 20 years. That means that we're going to have to look at job training opportunities. We're going to have to advance different skill sets because the skill sets that we have today are not going to be functional for tomorrow. We saw that in the areas of manufacturing. We then saw it in distribution. We've seen it in the technology sectors. We're now seeing it in the areas of information workers as well. So we're going to have to develop new skill sets because we cannot continue the traditional one skill or one learned trade is that for a lifetime. I've worked a lot in the job training area and I understand that we have a nice little saying that says the best way out of poverty is to have a job. And I have saying, a family-earning job. So we're going to have to look at models to do that. Transportation, I'll make the bold prediction that we're going to have more traffic, not less. It's going to accelerate. And the reason it's going to accelerate is that we're going to work more from home. We found that that's possible even with electric cars. We're going to find that we're going to have more commuting traffic. It's going to be short trips. And so we have to be smart about investments and take a look at technology to not only guide how those roads are used, but we're going to have to look at multi-modal approaches of sidewalks, trails, and other opportunities. We can't build our way out of it, but we've got to be knowledgeable and have to take a look at opportunities for federal and state funding, which are, by the way, right now in the process. And there's a lot of work to be done in that area. And I'm here to give you some bad news. The county can't sustain where it's at today. I was one of the chief architects of the county strategic plan as we know it today, which basically said that all citizens receive the same level of service and to backfill until we could provide some annexation opportunities to cities. We created special service districts. We cannot continue to add services. We cannot continue to do what we do without additional funding. Either means that we cut our costs, we ask the taxpayer for, once again, more tax dollars, or we find a way to partner with other municipal governments to use cost-effective methods to deliver. What would that look like? Well, unfortunately, the A word, the annexation word comes up. Cooperation is another word that comes up. We need to be very cognizant. And I say that, we're looking at 2% cuts, maybe potentially next year, 2% again. So I like programs like everybody else. I'm sensitive to those. We've got a great staff who can run the operation. This board and all boards and many municipalities need to be strategically thinking. You've always said that, you know, many, many boards and many different municipalities simply arrange the deck chairs on the Titanic. We're going to have to build a whole ship. We're going to have to understand that what we do today is driven by what we can afford to do. So we're going to need to figure out how to do that and participate with others to deliver services in a cost-effective manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Willey. And next, we're going to hear from, excuse me. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. And next, we're going to hear from Commissioner Willey from District Four. Commissioner Willey, I think you're on mute. Sorry about that.
Yes, sorry, I forgot to click the little button. So again, thank you, everyone, for being here today and certainly on a beautiful Saturday. And we'll be, I'll be brief in my comments. Two particular areas, as you can see on the screen, expanding rural broadband in underserved areas. This is something that has been exposed significantly from the pandemic. We have realized that with our students remotely learning, it is extremely difficult to do that when you do not have internet access or certainly sufficient internet access. It has to be fast, providing these kids with the ability to learn and to certainly download their homework assignments. So unfortunately, as we have found out, and I think the state has certainly been focusing on this, we have found out that our rural areas are significantly deficient in this particular area. The state of Oregon has established a few years ago a broadband office, but unfortunately, it was not funded. So this particular year, I believe there's going to be a higher emphasis on providing monies to fund that organization, that committee. Let me read a League of Oregon City's brief synopsis of what has been proposed. A $100 million general obligation bond for broadband infrastructure to allow the broadband office to provide infrastructure grants and loans, providing communities with matching grants for federal dollars and a path for smaller communities to fund broadband strategic planning. We have been also working with a smaller broadband group that is made up of representatives from the Tewa County, Clatsop County, Columbia County, and of course, Washington County so that we can begin planning- so that we can begin planning for, as they call it, the last mile. We need to be able to identify where the fiber lines are across our county and our rural areas. And then how do we work with the private sector to connect up what we refer to as the last mile? This is, this is a large, complex project that's going to take time, unfortunately. We are significantly behind in being able to develop what exactly the master plan will be. But my focus is going to be working with these other counties and certainly identifying what the next steps are and how we can facilitate getting broadband, rural broadband, to these areas much quicker. Certainly, there's technology that has been improved and made available, and we may be looking at that, at least in the short term, as it's going to take longer to, of course, develop all of the fiber and the last mile connections. The, I will encourage you to try something. There is an app for this, of course. There's an app for everything today. But there's an app so that you can see what your internet speed is in your house or wherever you are. So I would encourage you to download it. It's called Tested, T-E-S-T-I-T. It's an interesting app. I've got it on my phone. I did my own in-house testing and then take it into other areas. And if you're out driving around in the country, you might check it out there, too. You'll see the significant difference between what kind of internet speed you have in your house versus what is available in the rural areas. The other topic is the Salmonberry Trail. This is an eighty-four-mile trail that originates in Banks, Oregon, follows along the Banks-Bernonia Trail for a while to, until it gets to Manning, and then it heads off on its own. This is what they refer to as a rail-to-trail because this is an old abandoned rail line that was damaged in the 1996 and the 2007 storms, and it was just too expensive to repair. And this rail line was built a long time ago when trains could only navigate about a three or four percent grade. So if you can imagine going up and over the coast mountains, it winds back and forth through the valleys and the canyons, which makes for a very beautiful trail. So looking forward to how we can, in Washington County, again, team up with Tillamook County in providing access to this trail line, removing the rails, of course, replacing them with a trail that's navigable. And it includes trestles, and it includes, I can't really think of the word. But anyway, lots of navigation that we can navigate through there. It has beautiful river views. It is a gorgeous trail. And again, Washington County's share of that is a little over twenty miles. So we are looking at that, how we can begin to at least clean that up and make it available. And if you want to know more information on this, Jim Ryan of the Oregonian featured the Salmonberry Trail in the final episode of season one of Peak Northwest. So Google Peak Northwest, look up Jim Ryan, and it will be about a twenty-minute video, I believe. It'll show you beautiful pictures and lots of information on that. So thank you for this time. We look forward to exciting things and developing a new trail for Washington County. Chair?
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. And just a brief reminder for all of us. There are three commissioned districts that have rural portions, acreage of Washington County in them. Commissioner Treese's District Two, Commissioner Rogers, District Three, and Commissioner Willie's District Four. But District Four has the vast majority of that acreage. A lot of acreage, not so many people living there. So Commissioner Willie has the largest geographically defined district. So I really appreciate him bringing forward to life the need for expanded rural broadband. Just a reminder for all of us viewing, if you want or need closed captioning, we forgot to make the announcement earlier online that there, if you're watching via Zoom, there is a little graphic at the bottom of your screen to select. And welcome to, to all of our viewers who are watching the streaming video on YouTube. Thank you for joining us today. We are so thrilled to be here with all of you. So next, I'm going to highlight my priorities for this coming year. You've heard me talk about the need for focus in equity. This year, I'm looking forward to ensuring that we put forward new policies and rules for our procurement practices. And that includes investing in pre-apprentice programs here in Washington County to ensure that everyone has the opportunity of good jobs. Jobs in the trades are very effective. We've been working with our school districts to launch the first-ever pre-apprentice program here in our schools. Secondly, as Commissioner Rogers highlighted in his comments, the strategic plan for Washington County was developed decades ago in the 1980s when our population was much smaller than it is today. The last time there was this comprehensive strategic planning process was decades ago, and now here we are, facing the 21st century. And we're delivering services in the time of climate change with increased poverty and in a world where two minimum wage jobs is not enough to sustain a family. In the coming years, you'll have an opportunity to engage with us as we develop a strategic plan that fits our Washington County here in the 2020s. Also, that it reflects the values of our community today. So we've got to get ourselves organized later in the year, put together a program that is meaningful for you, and get that going. It's going to be a multifaceted program over multiple years, but it's important to ensuring that we have a thriving Washington County for the decades ahead. And as Commissioner Rogers mentioned, we have some challenges for our service delivery as well. I'd also like to talk with you about the importance of how we engage with you and help ensure that you have influence over our policy decision-making, but also our investment decisions. As you know, with the new board here in Washington County, you have a very engaged board. I enjoy serving with my fellow colleagues in service to you. We're here to serve you. That means you should have influence in how we do what we do. We want to hear from you. That's why we're having forums like this, this town hall. And we've tried to ensure that we're spending a big chunk of our time together in Q and A with you. We've also had other forums, like the Community Investment Conversation, to help us all learn more about the Washington County budget and how we're putting your dollars into action for betterment of our community. I also want to hear from you via email, but also through in-person testimony in our meetings. We're just people. Come talk to us. It's critical that we hear directly from you, especially when you think we're doing, we're getting something wrong. Though, I wouldn't mind hearing when you think we're doing something right as well. I'd like to go back a little bit to the equity in contracting. There's work not only to support good-paying jobs external to our agency, but also we need to do some work internally as well, ensuring our staff reflects the community that we serve. We need to make sure that we have good career opportunities for everyone in our agency, the over 2,200 employees that work for you. And of course, doing this work externally is important, and we want to make sure that we support the career pathways that are available and work with our regional partners. It's really important that we care about the outcomes for you, our community. So thank you for letting me share some of my priorities with you. Christina, before we head into our Q and A period, could you please help us remind folks how they can join the Spanish Channel?
Gracias, President Harrington. Bienvenido. Gracias por acompañarnos hoy. Hay traducción al español disponible para aquellos que desean participar en español. Para acceder al canal en español, va a la selección inferior derecha de su pantalla y haga clic en el icono del globo mundial, luego seleccione español. Si desea hacer un comentario, puedo hacerlo en español y su comentario será traducido al inglés. Tiene la opción de utilizar, levantar la mano, o también puede utilizar el cuadro de chat para hacer sus preguntas. Gracias.
Thank you, Christina. And now, all Commissioners, if you could turn your cameras back on, we're going to go through our Q and A section of today's meeting with our community members. Community members, and I see we're pretty much right on time for that. So we've got a good forty minutes or so with our community members. I just want to remind folks that you can email your questions to Elizabeth Mazzara Myers. Her email address is elizabeth_mazzara-meyers@co.washington.or.us. If you're participating here via the Zoom application, you can use the raise hand feature. And also, you can ask your question via the chat. And I know already during the course of this forum today that many of you have raised your hands, and our staff has noted that along the way. So they already have a list of people to call on and questions to ask us. So without further ado, if we could turn this over to Elizabeth to coordinate the questions that have been received thus far, that would be great.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. And actually, I've received my first email question. So I will read that question. Marcus, I will then ask you to read one from chat and then to you, Highland, and so we will go. This is from Robert Gray. He says, "The upgrade of the Rude Bridge Park Dock and the new Farmington paddle launch were huge steps in opening access to the upper reaches of the Twilton River toward a more diverse population of the county. The next logical step in this ongoing focus is the Eagle Landing Park. The launch of the park has not been maintained by the county and has been closed due to safety concerns. Opening the Twilton River up to the Western Rivershead population is a key piece towards meeting equity, diversity, and inclusion initiatives focusing on the diverse population of Washington County. I would like to work with the county commissioners on this issue. Which district commissioner is responsible for the Eagle Landing Park and Launch? He says it looks like a border between Districts Three and Four." So I will turn this over to the Chair and Commissioner Rogers and Commissioners Willie, if either of the three of you have an answer to that question.
I'd like to know a little bit. Yeah, I'd like to know a little bit more where the location of that is. I'm certainly familiar with the Farmington and the Rude Bridge project, but I'm not familiar with this is, so I can't respond if that's in my district or not.
Commissioner Rogers? Yes?
Yeah, yeah, Jerry. It is in your district. It's a, it's a good project. Go ahead. All right.
No, go ahead, Roy.
It's, Jerry, it's a good project. It's one that really opens up a lot of access to the river and been in planning for quite some time. As you get more familiar with it, you'll enjoy it.
So our Parks and Facilities staff came to us back in 2019 with an overview on this project and some improvements that are needed. Boy, 2019 seems so long ago with all the activities over this last year. Many of our projects were postponed during that time due to the need to focus on the community response to the COVID virus. So I don't know off the top of my head if that's what's transpired here. But certainly, for the person who's asked their question, as long as we have your email address or contact information, we can get back to you on further status on that. So thank you very much for your question. Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
And thank you to Megan. She's already sent me the address. I pulled it up on Google. Yes, it is in my district, and I'd love to have that conversation. That's a great area out there. It's not too far from Twin Oaks Airport, it looks like. So yeah, if this person asking the question could reach out to me at my county email, and I'd certainly like to have more conversation about this.
And Commissioner Willie, I forwarded that on to you and Megan already, so it's in your.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
So for everyone in our community, the email address for each Commissioner is district, the word district, and then the district number, one, two, three, and four, for whichever Commissioner you want to reach, at co.washington.or.us. And for me, it's chair@co.washington.or.us. And if you want to send an email to all of us, that email address is bcc@co.washington.or.us. Thank you. Next question, please.
I just wanted to make a quick note, Chair, that I'm an active paddleboarder and kayaker in that area. And so I will, I will make sure that Commissioner Willie follows through with that. So thank you very much for the question.
Great. And now, Marcus Ford, if you could unmute and bring a forward question from the chat.
Sure. The first question we had was earlier on from Chris Conrad. Will the county be involved in some of the state legislation this session that addresses housing and clean energy wonderfully framed through the lens of race and immigration?
I'll take a crack at that response. Thank you, Mr. Conrad, for your question. Your board, all five of us, are very engaged, and we're really fortunate to have three really high-caliber members of our government relations team. We have an established state legislative agenda that sets out top priorities for us, and supporting continued affordable housing needs is top of that list. They also, we've also empowered them with a set of guiding principles in their work because there are thousands upon thousands of bills that get filed each legislative session. So they can't come to us and ask us for direction on every single bill. But I rest, I can assure you that we are very engaged and interested in more positive outcomes for our community, investing in policies and programs that enable us to work with the state in what's called our state and county shared services. Housing, clean energy, equity are three key areas in all of that. So thank you very much for your question. And if you have a question on any specific bills, feel free to send us an email, and we can get back to you on that. Commissioners, is there anything you wanted to add on that? No? Okay, great. I don't know if you can tell, folks, but this is, this is our first town hall for the year. It's our first full Zoom one and having this interactive Q and A session. So thanks for bearing with us.
And Chair, I've made a note to myself. When we send the follow-up slide deck on Monday, I'll add the legislative agenda, so folks can take a look at the adopted agenda. Highland, can you now unmute yourself and bring, oh, excuse me, no, Highland, you're going to bring somebody forward who had a raised hand.
Yeah, Elizabeth, the first person to raise her hand today was Jake. So Jake, you can go ahead and unmute yourself now and ask your question.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Harrington, Commissioners and County officials and fellow community members. Thank you for taking the time to organize this town hall. Think it's a great signal to everyone here to participate and provide inputs. My name is Jake Krishnan. I'm a homeowner in the Bauer Highlands. My name is Jake Krishnan. I'm a homeowner in the Bauer Highlands Community, located in District Two, bordered on North with Salzman, Leylaw, and Thompson. And my comments relate to the Northwest Salzman Improvement Project that was initiated last year. One of the things that happened, positive development, was there was a community input project that was provided through the project advisory community that enabled community input from the different community stakeholders. And I was certainly active in that process. Coming to the main topic, there were two options laid on the table. And then later, a third option was introduced as an interim option. And one of the things I wanted to kind of communicate to the Commissioners here, and particularly Commissioner Trees, is that this project has been actively espoused by the community for nearly ten years now. And there was a commitment to provide a solution in January of 2016. It, as you can, as you know, Salzman is the main connector between communities and schools and other institutions on the one hand, and on Leylaw, and establishments on Cornell, on Thompson, Murray, on the other hand. So it's a pretty important connector in District Two. With the time elapsed between the original estimation of costs and the proposed timeline for improvement, I think there are going to be reasonable increases in the costs. And my question really is around the original budget and the two options that have been laid out. There is a significant amount of increase projected. In the best preferred option by the community, it's almost three X the amount budgeted. And for the next best option, which some community members don't even like, that's about 1.5 X of the original estimation. So my question is, what's the best way for the county to look for additional funds that would be needed for the right solution in the quickest amount of time? I'm sure there are ways to allocate additional money since this is an old project, I'm sure.
Thank you for your question, Jake.
Yeah.
Commissioner Trees?
Thank you. And Jake, I want to extend my appreciation to you for your involvement in the discussions that have been ongoing. And as you know, there are, my screen was changing there, excuse me. And as you know, there, we're still evaluating the options and frankly, the community feedback, because there's, there's varying positions there. The options are going to be presented to the board, I believe it's in May. And we will need to find out more before that time and identify the fiscal resources. So I appreciate your input. One other piece is that, you know, we'll be looking at MSTIP 3F and some other resources as well. But I know it's been a long time, but the truth of the matter is, it's, it's kind of still cooking. It's not done yet. So I appreciate, and one more time, Jake, thank you for your continued involvement. I'm very aware of your involvement in this process.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So there, I don't have any email questions, just want to remind folks. Elizabeth underscore Mazzara hyphen Myers at C O dot Washington dot O R dot U S. If you'd like to email a question. Marcus, I'll now ask you to unmute and take a question from the chat.
Sure, this is a fairly long question. And I want to give Lisa Stiller the opportunity to unmute herself and ask it, because she noted in the chat that she would be willing to ask this live. So I'll give her an opportunity to do that in the next ten seconds or so. If she doesn't, then I'll read it.
Lisa, are you there? Not sure how to unmute.
Highland, is this something you need to promote?
Yeah, I went ahead and, and give her the ability so she can go ahead and unmute and ask her question.
Okay, okay. So my question, I'm gonna make it really short. Over the past year, there's been a lot of utility and a lot of, you know, housing moratoriums, which is awesome. At some point, people are gonna have to pay that on top of what they're paying already. People who have not been working, who are in low-wage jobs, are gonna struggle. It's not gonna happen. We're gonna add to homelessness. I'm very concerned about the lack of affordable housing, the lack of, you know, options for people like this. Also, rent raises. Rent should not be being raised. I know there's a 10% cap when you add all the fees. My rent has gone up over $250 in the past two years. If you're not working or you're furloughed, this is gonna hurt people. I've asked the city of Beavard to work with renters, no response. What can you do to help people like this to stay in their homes and pay their rent and survive?
That's a great question, Lisa. Thank you very much. Your county commission, as well as city councils and mayors across Washington County and our region, have been working with our state legislators, as well as our congressional delegation, to ensure that we have a sense of how enormous this problem is, how there are people who are, as the phrase goes, in errors in back rent and in back mortgage payments. There are some proposals, including through discussions on what was the proposed American Rescue Plan to address some of those needs. Excuse me. We also, through programs from the CARES Act, as well as the specific Coronavirus Relief Fund, have been helping families in need who needed to have their rent covered while they could not work during COVID because they were having to quarantine during, during that. So we're continuing to invest dollars that we have control over to help people through this very difficult time. And we continue to be actively engaged at both the state and the national level to try and ensure that this, this very important, really hurtful aspect of our community is, has some attention through programs moving ahead. It's an enormous problem. You and I and my colleagues all understand that. But we are trying to help ensure that we can provide a positive path forward to people, because we don't want to see people become homeless. And to my colleagues, I can see you on screen. If you just have any other comments you'd like to add, just feel free to unmute. Otherwise, I think that's it. We'll move on then.
Great, thanks. And so Highland, we'll ask you to promote someone from the raised hands list. And then Marcus, I'll just, when that question's done, I'll just ask you to pop right in.
Great, thank you, Elizabeth. So the next question, the next raised hand that we had in the queue is from Mark Fitzsimmons. And Mark, I went ahead and gave you the ability to unmute yourself. You can go ahead and ask your question.
All right, I unmuted myself. First question, it's kind of a two-part, Twilton River Keepers, I'm a program coordinator for them. I guess we asked that the board consider better significant natural resource protections, that a larger percentage of upland habitat be protected over the existing code. And related to that, we asked that the commission consider a tree protection code for unincorporated urban areas of the county. Stormwater is a huge issue. And we focus on the areas close to our creeks and rivers and sometimes don't give the attention that we really need to, to higher areas where the water's coming from. And then I would just like to affirm the earlier question about that the board consider repairs and replacement of the Eagle Landing canoe kayak S U P launch ramp. The Twilton River was designated a National Water Trail last October. And if, if we're ready with our infrastructure, that could steer a significant amount of attention and paddlers our direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, for highlighting those three different items. For members of our community who may be new to the significant natural resources topic, this is an area that when three of us were new to the commission in 2019, we quickly learned that the county was in need of addressing our, our code based upon review and direction from the, the state. So our staff had a program that had been underway for a number of years. I remember hearing about it at a CPO seven meeting back in 2017 and 2018. So a proposal was brought forward. We did change our development code for various aspects of advancement for significant natural resources. That current code has been challenged at the Land Use Board of Appeals and through the Court of Appeals here in Oregon. So your Board of Commissioners, in working with our land use and our land use staff, continues to be engaged on this topic to look at how we can ensure that we have clear and objective standards as we are required to here in Washington County. As you heard from Mr. Fitzsimmons, many in the urban unincorporated areas have been asking for the county to increase or put in place tree protection codes. And, you know, part of this is impacted by the fact that we are responsible for these urban unincorporated areas since they are outside of cities, but also outside of rural areas. So we're trying to navigate through a very complex arena. It's taking more time perhaps than we would like. And certainly, things have been a little bit on pause during this last year of the global pandemic. So that's just a status update on that. And because of these lawsuits, we have to move very carefully and ensure that as, as we have community meetings, that good detailed information from the subject matter experts is available. And I can assure you, as Chair, I'm most definitely not a subject matter expert when it comes to the significant natural resource regulations. Do any of my colleagues have anything you'd like to contribute to these questions? Nope? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Fitzsimmons, for joining us today and contributing your thoughts to our work.
All right, so the next question that we have is from Karina Arrendes. And she asks, "I appreciate Commissioner Rogers," and I believe this is for Commissioner Phi and/or Commissioner Rogers. "I appreciate Commissioner Rogers' comment that we can't build our way out of congestion. I'm interesting, interested in hearing how we can apply the equity lens to our transportation investments to address not just congestion of automobile traffic, but also traffic safety, especially for vulnerable road, road users, ensuring transit-dependent people, including families, have access to job opportunities and services such as shopping, medical, parks, and rec."
Commissioner Phi, do you want to unmute?
I would be very curious to hear Commissioner Phi's comments on that, and then I would, happy to chime in.
I, you know, you know, can you all hear me? For some reason, I'm getting a voice back. I do think, you know, when we, I do think that when we talk about transportation, the focus tend to be on cars rather than people. So I do agree, the person that asked the question on that. And, and I do think that any planning focused on that does, you know, tend to sort of forget or leave out communities of color and low-income communities, especially neighborhoods in that. My intention, when it comes to transportation, it's really having, you know, how do we center the community when it comes to transportation planning process? And then focus on, you know, like, what is the need of communities? And, and, and I'm passionate and committed to centering people who are affected by this issue in the decision-making. And, and that's my intention to, when addressing transportation. I really think that if we put affected communities at the center of that decision, it would really help us to come up with certain measures and, and, and ideas that is from, you know, problem-solving from the people who are, you know, I, I've always said on the campaign that people who are closest to the problem are also closest to the solution. So how do we go from that, from an equity and community-centered perspective? And then really help move forward this transportation issues? So that's, that's what I would say, and that's been my approach to grappling with the transportation dilemma and the charge that people in my district gave me around, you know, electing me to address, how am I gonna alleviate congestion? So that's my intention. And, and I know, you know, it's gonna take a lot of money and, and, and really putting our money where our passion and value is. So starting with our value as a Washington County, if we're really committed to communities who are affected by this issue and starting with, you know, communities of color and, and low-income communities and in those neighborhoods, will definitely make an impact. So that's, for the last two months, what I've been focused on, to try to carve out a solution. How do we, how do I understand all these moving dynamics? And then how do I voice centering equity and, and affected communities?
Thank you, Commissioner Phi. Commissioner Rogers?
Well, thank you, as the individual who asked that. There really isn't any equity issues here. I mean, we all use the road, we all use the sidewalks, we all use the trails. And we've all said for a number of years that we're gonna have a balanced multimodal system. Nothing new here. We also have comprehensive plans in regard to trails, bike facilities, and road systems. The issue is money. It always has been and always will be. We have unmet need, not in the millions, but in the billions. And this board has dealt with that in the past. They're gonna have to deal with it in the future. You already heard on the earlier slide about the MSTIP program. If that's going to be restructured in some way, and it might be, then I don't know what you do about all of the high-growth areas that were funded through commitments to cities. We're gonna have additional congestion there. Currently, we spend about 25% of every road project in regard to off-highway matters. I mean sidewalks, trails, bike paths. So we've made significant strides. This board's also dealing with gain share. We just dealt with that the other day. There was some comment about how do we maybe use some of that money for some of the programs? That's about $2.5 million, you know, that we're gonna have to take out of the road system if we tackle that. And so there's money going out in that perspective. It's always been a money issue. And I would say clearly, I guess, having served on board for a number of years, whatever you want to pay for, we can do. I have yet in my district, as well as having represented the county in a number of other districts. I have not seen a clamor for raising huge amounts of money to solve these problems. So if that's what people want to do, we had a, a, a task that affected a lot of my district. It was a project for Southwest Corridor. Commissioner Trees was co-chair of that particular project. And it was clearly told to us that the answer is no. This is not in an economy, not in a time to raise taxes. So if you want to help us do that, that's great. I mean, it's, it certainly can be done. I mean, we can do anything with enough money. But I certainly commend the regional committee who sat and worked so hard on that get-moving project. We all supported it, and it went down. It went down. It went down in no close manner. And so this, you know, we're all on the same page. We just got to look at the principles. We got to move people. I predict, I won't see it, I've always done projects beyond my lifespan, but I predict you're going to have more traffic. And the reason is electrification of cars and because people are not going to be going downtown Portland or going elsewhere to work. They're going to work from home, they're going to supermarkets. You're going to have more traffic congestion. So how will that traffic congestion be dealt with? And I think we can't continue to look at the feds and the state. We're going to have to look internally for a lot of it. That doesn't mean we give up on it. We pound them, and we pound them, and we pound them. But I'll finish by saying, what are people willing to do locally?
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. I'd like to also thank Ms. Arrendes for your question. What you were really asking about is how do we ensure that we are, we as your local county government and in working with our state and federal partners, putting the resources that we have, the money that we have into action to help those who are more vulnerable or frankly, are on the lower income scale here in our community? You're right to highlight that. It's about how we take the money that we have and put that into practice. For example, through the next round of our major street transportation investment program, that's $35 million a year that your Board of Commissioner controls. Commissioner Rogers has mentioned that we've done a lot. The Board of Commissioners has done a lot of work on transportation over these last 20 years. They've been doing so with the practice of fairness, balance, and equality. What our community has told us loud and clear over these last five years is we need to make equity-based decisions. We need to make sure that those who are the most vulnerable to safety problems, those who have been getting injured or killed, have highlighted that we need to make improvements in those areas. But Commissioner Rogers is right to highlight that we do have challenges with the money. Some of these areas are in our urban unincorporated areas versus our cities. And cities have more resources to apply to improvements. But your county government has been making improvements. It's just that the need to make improvements is that much greater. So we have to regroup and seriously look at how we're going to program those local dollars, those MSTIP dollars that I mentioned, using an equity lens. The Get Moving 2020 program, where Commissioner Treese served as our representative and included a citizen advisory group here in Washington County, highlighted key areas such as along 185th TV Highway that need improvements. We've seen in recent years that the county did partner with the state and TRIMET and improved the intersection at TV Highway and 185th. This incorporated feedback from the Aloha Reedville Community Study with a lot of feedback from folks in that area to close sidewalk gaps and improve lighting, the kind of features that Karina asked in her questions. So thank you very much for asking that question. It's going to take a multifaceted approach. I have confidence in this Board of Commissioners that we will apply the principles of equity and figure out how to continue to make improvements throughout our community. Thank you so much. Were there any other commissioners who wanted to speak on this question? No, thank you very much. Next one?
Thank you, everyone. I just want to do a time check that it is 12:16, so we'll have just a few more questions. Highland, if you can promote the next person.
Excellent. Kathy had a question. Kathy, you can go ahead and unmute yourself to ask your question now.
Thank you very much, and thank you, commissioners. You are serving us well. How far along is Washington County in planning and implementation of expanded and new mental health and addiction services to carry out 110?
Thank you, Ms. French, for that question. We've just had some recent presentations in this field. Back in December, we had a comprehensive overview of behavioral health and mental health services in our community. We know that the need for mental health services is greater than we currently have supply. So your county commission is looking through our budget for our proposed budget in 2021 into next year to look at options that our staff has explored for us to see how we can increase access to mental health services. It's how we increase service hours at the Hawthorne Walking Clinic, how we have expanded service through our mental health response teams working with the Sheriff Patrol, as well as working with the state to increase access for mental health for more members of our community. Our staff is also, through our support and direction, exploring expanded addiction services through a triage and treatment center here in Washington County. And we'll be getting a further proposed information on that through our upcoming work sessions in March and April. This is an incredible area of need here in our community. We actively participate through the mental health experts at the state. And there are some areas for expanded funding to Washington County through the state. But we also have some areas where the state is looking at cutbacks. For example, our state legislator through the governor's recommended budget is cutting back funding at Community Corrections. And we know we have many people under our supervision who need mental health services and need addiction treatment services. So we're really doubly hurting ourselves because we're through these state budget cuts. Because with the state not providing us with the money for these services, we have the choice of either laying off those treatment experts from our staff and returning people to the streets without the support that they need, or looking at other aspects of our service revenue and our budget to try and make up for those gaps. These are really hard choices that your Board of Commissioners will be having to address with this next proposed budget. We know from our community investment conversations last November to help inform us through this proposed budget that our community wants us to increase our funding for mental health services. So thank you, Ms. French, for bringing this question forward. It's very much a work in progress. And with that, I wanted to see if any of my colleagues would like to speak further to this question from Ms. French. No? Commissioner Willie?
Yeah, just as an addition to that, you know, we've got this supportive Housing Services Initiative coming up that's going to provide us with some more funding, starting in late this year. And it's going to be directed at homelessness and on mental health issues. And I'm really excited about the fact that we can significantly enhance our county's mental health services capabilities through this funding. And so this is, remember, this is a 10-year initiative. And so we've got a great funding stream coming to the county over the next 10 years. And we have already began planning on how to facilitate using that money, working with agreements with Metro to make sure that we're all on the same page, as well as Montlam County and Crackamas County. So it's a great opportunity, and I'm just looking forward to the plans that are going to be rolled out. I know that the Chair and Commissioner Phi are both on this committee. And so I have a great deal of confidence that we're going to come out with a great plan when we get ready to get the money and put the rubber to the road.
Thanks, Commissioner Willie. Commissioner Rogers?
No, I would just, oh, thank you. Yeah, no, I'd just say that I think it was about three years ago, maybe four years ago, I spoke to the State of the County message about mental health services. It's probably one of the most serious issues we have. We can talk about lots of other things, but it is. Our jails are full of incarcerated people who should be in a mental health hospital and have those kinds of services. The state abandoned them, as you know, and placed it on the county level. That was unfair move. I think many of our current legislative folks are working on, and I appreciate that. But it's a very difficult, difficult situation. And I would say that, I'm going to sound like a broken record from what I said earlier, this county needs to understand where it's going with its own plan. If we need to have additional resources, where are they coming from? And if we need to partner with cities, for instance, to have them do some of the activities we're doing so we can release some of the funds we're spending, so we can look at what we call Health and Human Services. We need to do that. So there's a lot of strategic planning that needs to be done. And we need to have a very cool, long-term approach to all of that.
I would just like to add, Chair, to that. It's my belief that all five of us are very well aware of the needs that our behavioral health system presents to us. And I want to ensure those that are listening and watching that this is a clear priority. And there's nobody in this group that doesn't agree with that. How we approach it and how we utilize the resources that are available to us, continue to, we've continued to be informed by our staff and by our constituents. So I would encourage you to keep this conversation going, and thank you.
Great, maybe at a future Town Hall, we should focus on mental and behavioral health and what services we have, what we're looking to expand on, what some of the challenges and opportunities are, just an idea. Do we have another question? Thank you, commissioners, by the way. Appreciate it.
And I think that we have just five minutes left, and so this will be our last question. And so for that, Marcus, I am going to turn to you. I know there were some unique questions in the chat we haven't gotten to. I have put my email in the chat again. If we don't get to your question, or you have a different one, please email me, and we'll be sure to get back to you. Marcus?
All right, so this question is from William. Specific to Commissioner Willie, what is the biggest barrier to getting more broadband coverage in underserved areas? Is it that the telecom companies actually need to install the additional necessary infrastructure in those areas? Is that what you referred to as the last mile? How do we, the county and the state, push for them to do that? Is that what the available state and federal grant money would be mainly used for, funding the expansion of the infrastructure so that services are available to be delivered? Is there anything regular citizens can do to help the county get more of that funding or help get it used faster?
I saw that question in the chat box, so thank you very much for that. That's a great oversight. And I tell you, it kind of, there's no one answer to that variety of questions. First steps are going to be doing basically a master plan because we need to find out where the fiber is currently. And we know we have some major fiber lines running from, certainly from Hillsborough to the coast. We need to find those. Then we need to begin to use technology as how best to get this service to some of our more revote housing. And that in lies the problem, you know, in the private sector, they can install internet services and certainly cable and all those kinds of things in our urban areas because we have the density. And that allows it to be a profitable investment by our private sector companies. When you move into the rural areas, you don't have that. So there has to be some sort of subsidized ability to get, to not only build it, but sustain it because it won't pay for itself. And so all of those, some of those are legislative issues. Some of those are being able to tap into not only the governor's $100 million that she's committed. Now, remember, that's her budget, and generally, she doesn't get all of her budget. But also, we have to look at this $1.9 trillion COVID relief package that has just passed this morning. As always identified, I believe there's multiple billions of dollars included in that package specifically for rural broadband. We've got to be in a position where we're ready to reach out and apply and ask for that money. We certainly have very strong support by Senators Merkley and Wyden. They are in great positions federally to help us with those kinds of things. But it is, it's a plan. So right now, we're starting with the basics of identifying the problem and how we best accomplish going into that problem. I think there's probably a variety of avenues that we can do. I mentioned satellites. That is some of the newest technology. But so there's a variety of things we're going to be looking at. I'm sorry, it's a big answer because it is a really big problem. But we're going to try and address this as aggressively and quickly as we possibly can, certainly out in our corner of Oregon.
And Chair Harrington, that was our last question. We are at time.
Well, I'll just close by thanking everyone who has participated today, watched this Town Hall, asked your questions via Zoom, as well as through streaming video on our YouTube channel. We greatly appreciate your spending time with us and engaging with us. Once again, don't hesitate to email your commissioners. You can find our contact information on the Washington County website. The website is co.washington.or.us. And please do come and attend one of our meetings. Come talk to us, testify. We have two different oral communication sessions with each one of our business meetings. And that includes one evening meeting per month. Thank you again, everyone. We really appreciate it. Have a great afternoon. Bye-bye.
And commissioners, we will wait for members of the public to leave. Staff are going to stay on. You're welcome to stay if you'd like.
Thank you very much, staff, for helping us do this. Really appreciate it. Great logistics.
Thank you all for joining us on a Saturday as well.
Y'all did a great job.
That was good.
I really, I really appreciate it. And are we, are we just us?
Are we still recording?
Still working on removing folks from the
Thank you.
webinar.